Thank you for attending the regularly scheduled board meeting of the Interstate 35 School Board of Directors. We'll go ahead and open up with a call to order. Nathan Gibson here.
Dan Hutton here.
Jessica Buckland here.
Melissa Keller here.
Monica Strange here.
All right, and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll quickly review the I-35 mission statement, district priorities. Mission statement, the Interstate 35 Community School District exists to develop lifelong learners and responsible, productive, successful citizens in an ever-changing society. Our district priorities are to articulate and support a cohesive student center pre-K through 12 vision for continuous school improvement, engage in effective teaching and relevant learning for the 21st century, and operate with fiscal integrity, efficiency, and effectiveness. Before that, I just wanted to, before we get into the discussion, approve the agenda items, I just wanted to recognize Mr. Grandin for being here. It's your first board meeting, so thank you for being here, and we're all looking forward to work with you. So with that, is there any discussion on the agenda? Seeing no discussion, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
It's been properly motioned. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor, signified by aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Next, we have open forum. Resident students, parents, guardians, and staff members of the district may address the board about relevant topics. Those who wish to speak must sign up at the beginning of the meeting. Speakers' participation is limited to five minutes per meeting. We ask that speakers to remember that Iowa law prohibits the board from discussing specific employees, students, or their performance. This evening, we had one person sign up to speak, Ms. Jamie Lee.
First off, thank you for letting me speak tonight. Mr. Grandin, excited to have you here. After the last board meeting, I had a conversation with a board member who brought up that there was some concern with SRG related to how that would impact admissions at different colleges. So shortly after, Michael and I went to tour Drake, and I brought up to the admissions counselor, after looking over his transcripts, like, hey, our school switched to SRG, and she looked at me and was like, okay, and like, what else? Like that. More or less said that the shift to SRG does nothing. When Drake looks at admissions, they look at your GPA, the grades that are on your transcript, which we still report in traditional letter grades. So unless you tell them, they have no clue. Like, makes no difference. To follow up, I went ahead and contacted Central Iowa, Iowa State, Wartburg, Luther, and Creighton. All the exact same response. Creighton actually laughed at me. Like, why is this even a question? They were confused about my call, not sure why I was even inquiring about it. They did say that they look at courses taken. They brought up our trigger word, rigor. They want to see, has the kid challenged themselves? That's number one. Have they been involved in extracurricularship, or extracurriculars, leadership opportunities, various things for volunteering outside of school? That's what they look at. They're not so concerned about those zero through four that our teachers see. They're concerned about that end grade, GPA, and then the rest of it. The other thing I wanted to talk about was our board training meeting we had the other night. I actually was really excited about that. Started off on a really good foot. Mr. Grandin, love the vision you shared for the school when we were talking about goals, really invigorating. Jessica, your vision, where you said you wanted a supportive, well-rounded district who respects all voices and pushes students to grow every day, or every day to grow, right in line. Couldn't agree more. That's what we need. So was really excited to hear that. Where things went awry for me was when we started talking about committees. The line was that our committees have been handpicked to get certain outcomes. As someone who's on many of those committees, teacher committees, community committee, or community committees, my son serves on many of those, I was highly offended. You talk about, we have BLT, we have BAT, we have SRG, those are our teacher-based committees. We have some that are volunteer, community-based with PSYAC, the facilities committee, our labor management committee, et cetera. To say that those were handpicked for a certain outcome really hit. And I think all that's going to do is alienate. I've talked to some people who are on those committees, let them know what was said. That was a public meeting. You've got some people ready to step down, voices that have made an impact and have really put themselves out there to say, hey, we want to be the difference makers, we're going to challenge the process, we want to be a part of this, are no longer willing to. So we need to consider, when we're trying to get to that vision, the fact that our words carry weight and the things that we're saying about these people who have been involved and have really put the time and the effort in there, what are we doing to meet that vision then? Because I feel like that was a direct 180 on our rules. So that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I think we, next we have student representative report, but we don't have that during the summer months. So next, we have the principal's report. Ms. Woods, but I don't think she's here, but she did give us a write-up, so I don't know. Any questions on that? Okay, all right. Mr. Beckel?
I don't think there was anything on there that I saw for principal's report.
Please do.
If you would like to, yes, thank you. All right.
All right, so basically, we went to Washington DC to the Standards Institute. It was a five-day training, four-day, four-day training. And it was 8:30 to 4:30, so it was all day, jam-packed, full of good stuff. The main things to glean from it were the alignment of a standard to the activities in a class. So just ensuring that we're teaching and helping students get to the level of rigor that's expected in the standards. So there's two basic strands for the teachers, where English language arts or math, and I was there with all English teachers and instructional coach. And there's also a leadership strand. So I attended the leadership strand. And that was really on how to walk into a classroom and evaluate the level of rigor, the expectation of the students in the class, and ensure that things are aligned. So it was a lot about alignment. There was a lot of conversations about equity in the classroom too, or access to the instruction of the materials, or the level of rigor for, the expectation for students across the board. Just to make sure that if we do dip in our level of expectation, or if we provide scaffoldings, or adjustments, or whatever for a student, that we don't stay there, that we help kids get up to the same level, and ensure that everybody's learning at the expected level for the standard. The teachers that were with me were very well behaved. We had a great time. We actually ended up doing an escape room just for fun one night, had a blast. Actually, the first time I've ever gotten out of one of those things. But yeah, Scooby-Doo escape room was pretty awesome. Any questions about it?
So you said it was just English teachers?
Yeah, it was the secondary English teachers and Mrs. West, our instructional coach, too, and me.
Did you get out of the escape room?
We did. Well, like, three minutes to spare is awesome, right? Never done that before.
Was it really Scooby-Doo?
It was seriously Scooby-Doo.
All right.
It was awesome, yeah.
I'm in.
All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Beckel. All right, Mr. Weber? Nothing today? Okay. All right, next, moving on to the superintendent's report. We have an update for the facilities and construction updates, and then some for the rural school advocates of Iowa. Mr. Grandin?
Yeah, Garrett, if you want to come on up, he'll provide an update with our construction projects going on.
Thank you. Hello, everybody. So yeah, just a quick update, what we got going on, the two projects, the science lab. We're still on track, turned that over a week before the start of school. If you've been in the space, it's got new ceiling grid, new paint, new floors are going down. Case work scheduled to deliver tomorrow and Wednesday. So that'll be going in over the next couple of weeks, and we'll wrap that up, like I said, week before school starts. So that one is tracking well. Baseball softball fields, if you've been up there north of the school, you'll see the sods down the practice field, the seeds already been down in the outfield as well. It's starting to sprout up a little bit. We, it's frustrating it took so long to get to where we needed to be to seed, but when we did, the weather has been very beneficial for that. We've also started, masonry block work is ongoing up there. So you'll start seeing concession stands and dugouts, backstops going vertical. And we've also started pouring that parking lot. That should pour out this week. We should be done with that parking lot. So it's kind of an update of what's going on onsite. Overall schedule for baseball softball field, we're still on track for that one. We'll have bleachers in October as expected delivery. That's kind of the last major activity. Then we'll come back in the spring and button up things we need to before opening season, opening game. So budget-wise, I did send that summary out. We're still tracking right on budget. Again, we're under budget on the overall project. With the approved change orders to date, we're just shy of $300,000 in contingency, which is a very healthy amount for the project we're going in, the stage of work that we're at onsite. So feel pretty comfortable with that. I've been talking with Chad and having bi-weekly update meetings with Chad and the design team as well, keep everybody up to speed on both projects. Any questions?
I have a couple.
Bring it on.
This related to the contingency stuff. So as I understand it, we've had two kind of situations that have had us to dip into that contingency fund. Well, one definitely, two, you know, possibly. One of them was the, I guess, failure to locate the fiber that goes to the CTE building, and it got cut into. And as I understand that, the feedback is that's on the school because we didn't necessarily tell you where the fiber was at. We had, we had the knowledge of that, and because we failed to give you that information, that would be on us, correct?
Yeah, it was a private locate, a private utility that got damaged.
Okay, all right, gotcha. So then, I have a secondary follow-up question to that, is on the bathrooms. We, we, when we went through this project, we paid the architect group, who was that? I forget who it was.
OPN.
You know, to design the bathrooms, design everything per code and everything like that. It was a failure on them to identify that we needed to have the public bathrooms. So if you follow the same logic on the first one, that that was on us, and we potentially have to pay for that, then why is the school and the taxpayers on the hook for the second half when that knowledge, we paid the architects to know that? And they should have known that from the very beginning.
Yeah, that is a fair question. We can have that conversation with OPN. I know we've had that conversation with them a little bit, and we can certainly set up a meeting to further that discussion. What I was told from them was it was just interpretation of the code. There's been some code official change out at the state level. They tried to explain there was precedence on past projects, that they didn't, they were not required to do this family restroom. Code official said, no, his interpretation of the code is we need it. And that's where that disconnect came from, from OPN's end. We did what we typically do on a lot of construction projects to keep on schedule. We get a preliminary code review, the design team will. They got no comments at that time, so we proceeded on, so we could get out to bid and get the good price, and we did, keep things moving accordingly, and then we get the official review. Unfortunately, this one had this change that we ended up with. So we're open to further discussion. If you have questions, I just have to bring OPN into loop.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so was the fiber on the, on the plans?
Fiber was not shown on the plans.
Okay, correct me if I'm wrong, didn't DCI Group put the CTE building up?
Yes, five years ago.
Yep, but you guys were the ones that did it, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Did the contractor contact the school district for locates?
That I am not.
Not 811. Did the contractor contact the school?
I would have to check with them specifically.
Because they would be required to contact the owner.
But 811 was called, and we've been doing
Yep.
locates with the school for other utilities out there.
And what does our spec book for this project specify? Does it say to contact the owner and 811?
Yeah, contractor responsible to contact public and private locates, yep.
Okay, so we won't be paying it?
If that, we can certainly have this conversation.
That would be my vote, if it comes to that.
Okay, so Chad has all the backup that he can review with you guys, and we can, yeah, we can have this conversation.
I assume, Mr. Grandin, you'll have conversations with them on all these topics and keep us informed on it? Okay.
So yeah, so Nick Brock here is a project executive with DCI Group. A lot more experience on school projects than I, so he did come.
Yeah.
Came up here to say something?
If I could just take 30 seconds.
Yes, sir.
The contract states that you, as the school district, will participate in locating private utilities. That conversation did happen with your facility manager.
Okay.
Superintendent did discuss where we were going to dig, showed him where we were going to dig.
And he requested that in writing from us, from our facilities manager?
I wouldn't say it was in writing, it was on doing. We meet, we meet virtually.
The only reason I'm having this conversation with you is because I do a lot of schoolwork. And I am required to, in writing, contact that school district.
The contract doesn't say they have to do it in writing. The contract says that the owner will assist with locating utilities. That conversation did happen.
Okay.
Conversation from our project superintendent and your facility manager, and that may not be the title, I'm just going to call him that. They did discuss where they were digging. He said, no, I know about a fiber line, it's not in this area where you're going to dig. He, I don't know whether he assumed it was to the east or to the west, but it was not in the area where we were going to dig. So we wasn't dug through there. Turns out, it was exactly right where we were digging. So if you guys don't have a drawing to show us, and it's not on the current set of documents that there's any fiber there, and we can show you the current set of documents, there's no fiber anywhere in that area, we're safe to dig at that point. It's no different if we were in a public area along the street where Iowa One Call marks it. If they don't mark it, you know it's good to dig.
So would you agree that we continue to work with DCI Group? Because you guys have done the other projects here, and you guys have the background knowledge to continue to build stuff for us, correct? I mean, that'd be a good, like,
Sure.
pretty good statement to make, correct? We pay you to be the experts. We pay you to help us along in everything else.
Agreed.
I'm okay with having a continued conversation about this and talk about maybe some options or everything else. But I know for a fact from my background that I have to, in writing, request the school district to do it.
Every contract is different, sir. Every contract.
That's fine. That's why I'm saying, I'm open to discussion on it. Because it sounds like it's an eight or $9,000 bill. Correct?
Yeah, it's $8,000.
Okay. So we're not asking to vote on it tonight, correct?
Correct, yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, next, we have the, did you have anything else on that topic? Okay, the rural school advocates of Iowa legislative issues. This was an interesting read.
Yes, so in your packet, you have a link to the 2024 legislative priorities from rural school advocates of Iowa. I-35 is part of this group, along with many other rural schools. It's a great resource to have. Part of their responsibility is to go to legislatures and advocate for rural schools. Each year, they gather information from all the rural schools on what are the legislative priorities that they should bring to legislators coming up in the next school year. The document there that you have, the 2024 legislative priorities, just lists out some of those items. And what I'm asking you to do is I'll put the link in my Friday update this Friday for you guys to go on, and you can complete the survey as a board member. And so that way, each of you, we may not all exactly align with all of them, and that's okay. Because the survey is one to least likely, to want them to advocate, to most likely. And so I'll fill it out as your superintendent, you guys fill it out as board members, and then we can submit it. That way, they have as much data as they can to move forward for next year. So be looking for that in the Friday update. But make sure you take a look at those priorities and read through those to get an idea.
All right, thank you, Mr. Grandin. All right, next, we have discuss or approve the consent items. You guys should have got the link to the past meeting minutes, the monthly bills and financial statements, and the resignations and contracts. Ms. Wellen hired as the tag teacher. And then open enrollment data. So is there discussion on the consent items?
I have a question on one of the invoices, Bombella Holdings. What is that? It's, it's on the one that you gave us today, so I'm just now seeing it.
I don't know, and I don't have the software up to look at it
Okay.
to see specifically what that company is for.
That's fine.
But I'll follow back up with you.
Okay, thank you. And then Indianola Community School, I see the open enrollment tuition, $46,000. Is part of that for students that if they sign up to attend or participate in an activity over there? Is at Indianola, because I know, like, they offer swimming? Is any of that in the Indianola, the open enrollment, or is that just open enrollment?
That's your open enrollment, it could have a sped. Like, the sped billing is separate too. So it's your open enrollment, your gen ed, and then the TLC.
Okay, so it wouldn't be for any, like, extracurricular activities?
It could be concurrent enrollment also, which is like your college classes.
Okay.
There's a portion that we pay if our students that are there are taking classes too. And I can get a, I can send a detail of what that billing is, and that'd be the same with the rest of the schools too.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
I just, I think I asked this question on the last one, I can't remember the answer. I do remember you giving me the answer, so I apologize. I see open enrollment going out. When, when do we start seeing us getting money from other schools or people enrolling in?
A lot of those checks where we billed the other schools have came in, actually, today. We got a handful of them in.
Okay.
But you won't see those listed
Oh, okay.
because they're deposits, and these are just expenditures.
So you're just expenditures?
Yep.
Okay, all right. Thank you. All right, any further discussion on the consent items? See none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll motion to approve the consent items.
It's been properly motioned. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor, signified by aye.
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 Opposed? All right. Next, we'll move on to the discuss, I'm sorry, items for discussion. So we have basically four items here, A, B, C, D. We're going to go through each one of these, I think, individually to allow for some discussion. So I think the first thing, we'll start with the handbook, the certified staff handbook. Is there a discussion on the certified staff handbook? So I guess I'll open up, seeing no discussion on this. I think, as you're aware, we had the conversation during the last board meeting about the standard reference grading that's in this particular section. And we gave some feedback. Unfortunately, I think due to timing and stuff, we didn't have, you know, the opportunity to have a working session or a conversation on this. So we're going to have to, you know, have this conversation this evening. Because one of the things we do need to do is approve this handbook and, you know, get direction back to the administration so they can understand going forward for the school year. It doesn't necessarily, in my mind, mean that we have to, you know, achieve everything under the sun that we're getting feedback on and we want to go through. I don't think, you know, for me, that's not necessarily the place of the board to go through that. But we do need to set some direction in North Star. And for me, again, I'll reiterate what I talked about the other night, is I really would like to see a committee process reviewing this. But on that, that committee really have that secondary lens and that secondary perspective and that secondary, you know, view, kind of making those decisions and those recommendations to us based off some, you know, kind of North Star guidance that we learned in that meeting on where we need to go. Again, I'll just reiterate some of my concerns that I brought up is, you know, we're not only teaching kids, we're developing good citizens, which includes, you know, accountability. The other thing for me was getting parents visibility and understanding so they can be engaged in the learning process. My experience over the last year was I didn't see grades until, you know, right at the end of the semester, and that's because most of the grades are just assessments. They weren't necessarily bodies of evidence. I think these are things we can work through. I think they can be incorporated within standard reference grading. But I would like those, to see those addressed over time through a committee process made up of secondary voices. So I, my biggest thing is making sure we're, you know, I think homework, at least some aspects, something needs to be graded for that accountability piece. So that's my two cents. I don't know if my peers have anything they want to add to that.
Yeah, I would agree with what you're saying, Nathan. I think, to clarify with at least some of what we talked about the other, what was it, Thursday or whatever at the meeting, that I think it's great to have a full committee, obviously, look at the grading stuff. But you have to step back and realize secondary and elementary are two separate entities. They're two different maturity levels, it's two different topics being spoken. And that's the suggestion of why it should be separate committee meetings. Not to say they can't come together and talk about the big topic stuff, as they should. But I think what's maybe concerning in secondary maybe isn't going to be concerning in elementary. And it's important to have those voices being able to be heard and have good discussions with people at the table. Secondary may not be able to, you know, give the feedback that elementary is necessarily looking for because they're not teaching that stuff, they're not having those same issues, and vice versa. So I would agree. I agree too with the accountability. In the handbook, it taught some stuff about, you know, perspectives on grading and whatnot. And a big one, you know, is that it's, grading is inescapable, but feedback is critical. And I think the grading of those classworks, or bodies of evidence, or homework, or whatever you want to call it, is crucial, and you need kids to do the work. And so I think adding in some of that grading will help the kids and the family and kind of be that carrot we need to start having those discussions and whatnot. And so kids know where they're at, and parents know where they're at. And you're scaffolding up, like we've said before, that word, to get to the assessment, where you should be assessing on, do they know the standard? But are they doing the work to get there? Because if they're not, they're not going to know the standard, so.
So it's my understanding what we're doing is we're going to have Mr. Grandin. We're going to approve the handbook as is. Mr. Grandin is going to get with the administration and possibly come up with some stuff to possibly put in there throughout the year?
I think for me, and I'll let others speak, for me, that's, you know, partially right. We, I think there needs to be committee. Mr. Grandin needs to work with the committee and the secondary, you know, staff to figure out what, you know, what this looks like going forward. I would like, you know, to obviously approve the handbook, but with, lack of better word, some sort of resolution, you know, to come back in August or something with incorporating grading, right? Just a North Star, grading of homework, what that is, 10%, 20%? I don't know, I want that committee to figure it out. But some sort of direction, so when that committee does meet, they at least have kind of the North Star. That's what I'm looking for. I don't want to be prescriptive, like a certain, you know, percentage or amount or anything, but more descriptive, like, you know, approve the handbook and maybe come back in August with a recommendation on incorporating grading for homework. Something to that effect. That's where my head was at.
I would agree. I'm looking to have that implemented before the school year starts. And then to have this continue to be looked at this year actively, but I think it will make more progress with it, with the separation of the two. And I know when Superintendent Detlinger had been here, that, you know, she mentioned a possible task force or whatnot of community. And I think it would be appropriate, you know, if you had some secondary parents that, you know, could lead that discussion and whatnot, or give feedback at least, you know, because we don't always get it from the entire community, and elementary could have one as well. Because those are the parents that are, you know, this is what I'm seeing, this is what I'm struggling with, and that kind of gives us a better idea to, and Mr. Grandin and the committees of those issues and whatnot. So those voices are being heard as well, and we can make changes as needed to the handbook throughout the year too.
So a couple of things, I think, am I on, yeah, making changes to the handbook throughout the year. That, I'm very, that concerns me. I want to be careful what, that's a very open-ended, you know, we, they have to plan PD, and there's so much that's around that, so I want to be very, very careful that. So I want to be very, very careful that we're not setting a precedence that we're gonna make changes just whenever we feel like it. I know that's not what you said, but I just want to be very careful that, you know, that's not the intention here. With the committees, I do think, you know, there's been a lot of comments that parents don't understand and parents can't figure this out and they don't know how to support their kids. So, well, I'm not really excited about another committee or a task force. In the conversations, if we're gonna do that, I definitely agree that we do need to have a parent voice, a couple of parent voices. And I would encourage, I don't know that they have to be just secondary. I think they can be elementary parents as well. I think if you have someone that's an expert that is paying attention and wants to give their voice, I think if there's a parent that wants to be involved, then that should be allowed. But again, I want to be very careful on the integrity and just the work that's been done up to this point with the committee. I just, I think it's only fair that we prioritize, or Chad, you come back to us and as a board, you know, I, I don't know what's the priority here, right? Because there was things, you know, if you look at, is it infinite campus? Is it the A to D, A to C? Is it the grades, is it the college transcripts? So we're talking about so many things, so I just want to be very, very careful, you know, what's the priority? And that needs to be outlined and really, really clear. Especially to the team that has already worked on this numerous times and now we're gonna take it back again. So I just want to be, again, you know, very careful about how we're getting that information and the timing of it because it's gonna affect everything that they do. So if there's a priority to something, then that needs to be outlined tonight because it's July. So that's a big concern to me. And I don't know what that looks like to build that.
And, you know, looking at the secondary handbook, I don't know if it's really necessarily the grading of the bodies of evidence and that information that we need to look at. It's more of the feedback that the teachers are giving the students and making sure that that is something that they're doing. I've heard numerous people discussing the fact that, you know, like Nathan has said, at the end of the semester, you get bombarded with notifications that all these grades are going in. Some of them, the students don't even get back before they take their assessment. So I think that goes back towards the, to the teaching staff and puts that, you know, do we need to be having, having our kids have conversations with those teachers and getting that feedback back to them? If it's not getting, if the teachers aren't responding to that with the kids, go up to the next level. Mr. Beckel would be able to go then and talk to the teachers. I don't know if necessarily the grading of it is as important as the feedback that the students are getting, whether they're meeting that part of the standard that they're working on in the class that day.
Yeah, I would agree, but I think too, I guess the grading part of the big frustration that I get back from people I've spoken with is to ensure the kids are doing the work. And that's why you can determine how much, you know, grades are worth or classwork is worth. But that way you're ensuring it and then you can give that feedback. And hopefully that way the standard, the assessment, which is gonna hold the most weight, you're better prepared for, you understand. It's, you know, in my experience with teaching and stuff, if it's not graded, the kids aren't gonna do it. And it's whether it's five points or two hundred points, it doesn't matter. If they're getting something, they're like, oh gosh, this is gonna help my grade in some way. You're getting that buy-in. And then hopefully when it comes time for assessment, we're not having to see retakes because kiddos are getting the information, they're processing it, they've gotten that feedback. They've bought into the process, it's all being scaffold up. And then some teachers, you know, feel like, don't, no longer feel like their work is for naught because, you know, they're doing stuff that kids are just not participating in. To kind of assure that, that buy-in and that way it keeps the integrity of what's been done and continue to work on that while, you know, giving, giving that carrot that I think so many are asking for. And I would agree, my intent isn't to like every month, let's change the handbook before that gets out. Yeah, absolutely not. But creating these committees, right, you don't need a committee on a committee. But to get at least some of the feedback, to make process and work, whether it is a, maybe a end of semester change or it changes for next year's handbook, whatever it is. But to get that continual work and say, well, maybe we can tweak that or work through that ourselves now. And that was more kind of the intent, but still thinking there needs to be something added in.
So, so if I was here and I was sitting out there and I was a teacher or I was a committee member that was on the committee, what would be the priority right now?
I would personally want to, for me, priority would be how do we implement grading of the classwork? And make it where you get that buy-in from the kids. And I think they have a better understanding of where they stand and how ready they are for assessments too. And for parents to be able to be more of the process that, if I was to pick one thing right now, that's, that is where I would say we need to, to work on and incorporate.
For me, Melissa, I think, I don't know if it leads to that, but for me, the priority is, is the kids progressing, you know, first week in school, second week in school, third week in school. How does a parent, you know, get feedback on that second week of school that the student may be struggling in that particular thing so they know to help them? There might be a hundred different ways to solve for that. I've racked my brain, I've had the conversations with the committee because what I feel right now for me is I don't find out until, you know, right at semester end when assessments happen. So a way to solve for that is having certain bodies of evidence or homework, you know, be set up for grading so I can understand where my student is, you know, throughout the journey rather than right at the end. So for me, it's, and I don't think that's a technology problem. I think to Monica's point, that's a feedback problem, right? But a way that has worked in, you know, in the past and worked very well is doing homework. That's how we judge where our kids are at, doing bodies of evidence. And I think for me, it does two things. One, gives the parent that information, but two, also does that accountability thing for the student, right? The, you know, producing citizens, you know, having them understand you were asked to do something and here are the consequences if you don't do that. And instead of learning that consequence on an assessment at the end of the thing. So I think mine's similar to Jessica's, but a little bit different in that, you know, getting that, that feedback and a way to do that is through the grading. So that would be, for me, a priority as well. Now, there are other things that I've talked about up here and, you know, sent, sent, sent feedback to the administration on. But I think to your point, I'd like to see a committee of secondary form because a lot of the other things I brought up are coming from the secondary teachers, right? So I think it's the right thing to form that committee. And hey, you have a voice, like, you know, come speak here. And what comes out of that committee is, is, you know, what we're listening to and you had the opportunity to engage in there. That's what I'm looking for for the rest of the stuff, is to really have that committee go through that, so. Don't know if that answered your question for the priority, but that was mine.
Well, and I think to speak on some of the difference, I'm fortunate, or you could maybe even consider it unfortunate, that I have a kiddo in secondary and I have multiple kiddos in elementary. So I'm getting the gamut of both. And in elementary, kids don't know that they don't have to do the work. And so I see their classwork come home all the time with stuff they're doing and I know how they're doing and they know how they're doing. And whether, you know, it's personally given a number or it's not. They just, they, you know, that innocent age where they just do what they're told. And so they do the classwork and it comes home. Whether elementary gets to retake any of their assessments or not, I'm not sure. I don't remember that ever being offered. Like I, my daughter could use that, maybe with spelling test a few times if it had been. But, you know, I was able to see your progress as we went through. Versus secondary where the, not all, definitely not all, but some kids, you know, get on, they're like, I don't have, I don't have to, I just wait for the assessment kind of thing, right? And that can be frustrating, particularly as a teacher, putting in all the work and saying, there's a reason I'm having you do this. And just having, having that buy-in, but like, you know, to what Nathan said, to keep that monitor. I've been, you know, I was able to, used to be able to keep track of my secondary kiddo by just saying, hey, why isn't this in? Or, hey, we didn't do so well on this, we maybe need to go in and get help before the test then, right? Because we're struggling in that. With this past year, I was, I was unable to do that and it showed in final grades, unfortunately.
Well, I think that one thing too, take English class for example. They're learning to write a paper. You know, if you're collecting bodies of evidence each day based off the standard that you discussed for the day, the teacher can use that to see how much the kids are retaining. And they're building on that. It's not necessarily homework that they have to take home and show that they can do X, Y, and Z. It's that they were paying attention in class and understand how to do that. Get those parts of it. You know, same thing for like a history class, you know? What did so-and-so do, you know, that, whatever standard they're talking about that day, you know, turn in a paper as they leave the classroom. And have the, you know, hold the teachers accountable to let the kids know what that, you know, what they need to turn in before they leave for the day. You know, it's not necessarily homework, but it's, they're, it's making them accountable to pay attention in class to what they're learning.
I agree, and I'm not looking for like homework to go home with kids, I'm not saying that. But I, saying that the classwork that they're being done, if it's not an assessment as of now, they don't get graded on it. So that's where you need the, you can still be teaching toward a standard, which you should be. But it's that grading portion that, you know, points, whatever it is, that accountability part that needs to be implemented back in, or at least the consensus in which I'm getting. I can't just give assignments and say, I'm gonna use that question as an assessment now. Because the assessment should push them to think next level, it should push that rigor and you should build them to get to that point.
So you're saying that, you know, say that if they're turning in their bodies of evidence throughout the, you know, maybe that's ten percent of what, just, you know, just showing that they're paying attention and they're building upon what they know where they're paying attention and knowing what they're, taking accountability for what they're learning to go into that assessment.
Yeah, I mean, they could figure out how it goes in for the grade, whether it's just points or it's weighted, whatever it is. But it's not just, I mean, it's the accountability that they're doing it, right? It can, it can help their grade for that assessment. Also gets more kids that buy-in to do the work for the teacher then we can be more prepared for the assessment, right? Because I can see where the class is, what they're doing, that's how I use mine now of, ooh, no, we struggled on this, I have to go back and teach on it, right? If half the class isn't doing it, I don't know where those kids are and you can't force them. So that's what I'm coming out of, I think it's super, super important for that. Or you can say like, wow, these kids are killing it. I can maybe push this assessment, you know, to push them a little harder because they are really getting it, right? And you can adapt and change as needed for that, you know, with teaching. It's not just, it shouldn't just be one, one and go and this is how you adapt to it. And some years you can push harder, some years you might have to pull back. But that's the importance of that classroom work and stuff to see that, to grow from that. And so kiddos also know where they are and they can ask the questions they need to ask because they're like, I'm struggling with this. So I'm not saying it should count for the majority of their grade, absolutely not, that's silly. You know, the assessment should do that. But I think you should, you know, give them something for that, you know, hard work in return. And like I said, it creates accountability, more buy-in, more kids doing the work and more preparedness than for the final test. Kind of like if you're, you work a job, I don't just get my evaluation once a year, right? I get brought in maybe a few times or I get observed and I get feedback. So I know what I need to grow on when it comes time for that last big final, you know, review. If I didn't, I'd go in there like a deer in headlights, like, oh, I had no idea I was struggling there or whatever. You know, you didn't tell me. And I didn't, you know, think to reach out because there was no benefit to me in it, or so I thought. So it's just kind of that balance.
Okay, so I've listened to what everybody has to say. And I agree with parts of it, like this, love this, loathe this, wherever you stand with it. We hired Chad here just a couple of months ago. He, this is his first board meeting and everything else. My stance on this, and this is just my stance, we implemented this last year, correct? Like last year was our first full year, right? I would like to give Chad the chance to start, he's gotten feedback from everybody, to start working forward with this the best way he sees fit. And if that is creating another committee to help with the secondary, that is creating another committee to help with the secondary. If that is grading homework, that is starting to grade homework. But I would like to give him the opportunity to do that. So with that being said, I would like to motion to approve the handbook the way it is. We can change stuff whenever we would like throughout the year, right, wrong, or indifferent.
I don't think discussion's over, so.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah.
But that's where my stance is on it.
Okay.
Thank you.
I, I absolutely agree. I think Mr. Grandin should take direction on this and should lead, which is why, you know, I gave that feedback. I think the important thing for us is, our, our job is to give Mr. Grandin that feedback and set the North Star, right? This was a training that we were just in and set, set the direction. And I think for me, part of that North Star, that direction is, we, yes, we're measuring the kid as they're learning. I get that and I agree. But we're also producing good citizens. So part of that conversation is how do you hold kids accountable, right? And the other part of that is, you know, part of kid learning, rigorous learning, I think, is what we're, is parent involvement. And if a parent doesn't understand what's going on, and I think Mr. Grandin's getting, getting this feedback, hopefully soaking this in and gonna have those conversations. I think the other thing is listening to our secondary teachers. That's the biggest thing for me. Like when I bring up and I'm talking up here, this is the thing that I'm torn about is I get the secondary teachers that are, you know, concerned about this. And I don't know how we bring that to the table and I think that's what he's gonna solve for us. Now, if that opportunity is there and they don't take it and voice, you know, that's a different conversation at that point. So I think those are, those are things I absolutely agree with, you need to see forward. However, we do need to set some direction and some North Star to understand where we want to go. So that's why my earlier proposal was not to be prescriptive, but descriptive. Let's, you know, grade some homework.
I'm curious, Chad, have you gotten any feedback since you've been here from secondary teachers? Or, I mean, and I know July first was just yesterday, but I'm just curious. Feedback from teachers, feedback from parents?
I have not.
Yeah, so, and I'm, I guess to come back with what you're saying, Dan, I, I see what you're saying and I'm not asking to tear this apart in any whatsoever. The recommendation I would have is coming from conversations from people that was needed with and representation for, you know, some of, the majority of those secondary teachers that I spoke with and community members with regards to the secondary aspect. And all I'm trying to do is, is give a carrot so that we can start moving forward and looking at stuff and, and making, you know, giving them something that they've asked for that is a fairly small change in the big gamut. It's not taking away any of the work that's been done. And that, that's what was really important in looking at that and having those conversations and why I would confidently make the recommendation I would to include that. So their voices are heard for that.
And I can appreciate that, that's, I was just simply saying, I would like to give Chad the chance to, you've come to him with your concerns, you guys have all talked, I appreciate that we're all talking about it. Chad has now heard it officially, it's gonna be posted and everything else. I just wanted to give him the opportunity to take the reins.
And, you know, I agree on that line too, you know, he'll probably, do you, Mr. Grandin, do you have plans to, you know, meet with the SRG committee, you know, once school starts? And will you be part of that?
Yes, and I will be part of the conversations, absolutely.
So, yeah, so like Dan said, he'll be able to get that feedback from them and, you know, incorporate feedback into that and, you know, expand on that with the secondary teachers and Mr. Beckel and see what changes do need to be made or what enhancements could be made to it to better serve the students and the teachers.
Okay, is there any further discussion?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
This clearly is not going to go away. So I don't, while I'm not opposed to looking at having bodies of evidence part of the grading, I don't understand enough right now to say, yep, that's the right answer. um, part of the grading, I don't understand enough right now to say, yep, that's the right answer. Um, you know, if that's something that you guys are saying, grading of classwork, you know, accountability and all of that, um, that's being heard, right? All of this is being heard over and over again. And I think, I do agree, Chad, that, you know, you're hearing all of this for, you know, from the last meeting and this meeting. Um, and I think you know as a board what's important to the board. Um, but you also know what's important to the teachers and the administration. Um, and so again, um, I just, I think there's been so much work done in the integrity of what's been done so far. I do understand if, if it's not working for the moment. Um, but I'm really struggling with, you know, not approving a hand, not approving the handbook as is because it's July. So I just, I feel like that's gonna put a lot of pressure on a lot of people that maybe we haven't heard their voice, or I don't know what their role is, um, on this, whether it's administration, teachers, staff. Um, I think that there is ample opportunity for the secondary teachers to give feedback. Um, I think that that's been said numerous times. It's, now's the time to, if, if last year wasn't working and something wasn't working, they need to be speaking up about that. Um, so before the school year. Um, so I don't, I don't know what, I don't know what the fixes for that. I don't have the answer because we all have a lot of different opinions about what's important of, of this. But I'm just, I'm struggling because again, I don't want to, the work that's been done and the timing of where we're at right now. Um, so that's, yeah, I'm, I'm just really struggling with that to change something right now. Um, I'm not sure, I.
I think, I guess, and maybe, and if you don't know the answer to these questions, say you don't know. But, um, you know, for me, I've been kind of engaged in this for three months-ish, four months. Um, attended committee meetings, gave, gave feedback. And it, it was hard for me when I saw the, the changes come up and some of the feedback that I had given wasn't addressed. And, and so while I agree with Melissa, right, it, it don't change at the right time. Had three months of giving feedback and, and there wasn't anything that, that came out at the end of that to address it. So it's kinda, it's, it's hard for me to say, oh, okay, I gave feedback, you know, not, and this is just my, you know, experience feedback as a parent, the thing I struggle with. Put aside, you know, the teachers that contact me, just my, my personal experience on, on this. And, and nothing happened. So here we are sitting in, in, you know, July, meeting, and Melissa's right, making changes at the right end, but I don't know what I could have done differently. I did everything I was supposed to do. I attended the meetings, I gave the feedback, right? Um, is it possible, or does it cause too much disruption now that you're hearing this feedback, that you could have meetings over the month of August with the secondary teachers, take this feedback and potentially formulate something in an August update to the handbook and it not be too detrimental? And you could bring that back to us? Or is that not enough time? I'm just curious your thoughts on that.
I think it depends what you're intending on altering. Um, so it's just, it, it's unfortunate, right? So I don't, I don't know the history and I can't change the past. Um, but what I can do is move forward and we can make better decisions moving forward, right? Um, so I think the difficult part is on July 22nd, if you made a decision that said, this is what we're doing and this is the, the change that we're gonna make, we could make that change, if it's a minor change, by August 23rd. Um, if you came back on August 22nd and said, we need to make this change, it would be extremely difficult. Um, not saying impossible, um, but it would be extremely difficult to be able to do that. Um, so I think if there's, if there's a change that's gonna happen, now's the time to do that. Um, I'm not advocating for that, or I'm not saying, don't do it. Um, but now's a better time than August, right? But what I, what I'll also add is, um, last year was year one of implementation. Anytime you implement anything, there's gonna be an implementation dip, right? So there's gonna be people that get it and do it really well. There's gonna be people that don't get it and don't do it very well. And it'll take up to three years for that to fully take on and for people to really understand that. Uh, that takes a lot of patience, a lot of understanding to be able to work through those things. And there's gonna be adjustments along the way, and you'll make changes throughout. Um, and this may be one of those changes that you make throughout. But I'm not willing, as a new superintendent that started July 1, to come in and to honor what Melissa was saying too with the committee, to come in and say, well, this is what we need to change. Because I don't know that history and I don't know that work that they, they put in there. Um, I need a chance to understand that and work with them and gather other people and other information to be able to make those, make those decisions. That makes sense.
I guess what I'm struggling with is to have another committee and another task force because it's already been done. And it, what I'm struggling with again is if there are teachers and if there are parents that have concerns, um, why, why aren't they contacting Chad now? And, and I get it, and I understand that we've all been elected for this position. I completely 100% understand that. Um, but I, I think that's what I struggle with is, is, and again, I, I'm not getting those, those questions and those concerns. And now we're in July, and I think to change everything right now would be, I just, I, I, again, I just, I think if, if you're gonna change something, you have to have a timeline, you have to prioritize. But I don't know having another committee i- is gonna fix what the problem is. Because I feel like there's, some of you already know exactly what you want to change within the policy. And I'm not, I'm not opposed, I'm not, I'm not saying I'm for it, I'm not, I just, again, I think we're, the timing of where we're at right now and, and to, I, I feel like, you know, Chad needs to learn what's most important again to the committee, to the board, to the administrators. It's a lot of information that he has to prioritize and come back to us. And he has heard it now numerous times. Um, so I guess that's where I stand. I, you know, after having this discussion and just thinking, uh, more about it, um, I, I wouldn't change and I wouldn't, uh, hold up anything at this time. I think I would proceed with as is.
Yeah, I, I get that, Melissa. I think the thing I challenge with is I'm a parent. I brought it up, right? Uh, put aside, yes, I get feedback, but I'm a parent. I struggle knowing where my son is at. And I brought it up for three months and nothing was changed. Now, I'm not saying I necessarily want to change everything on this. But what I want is a, a committee that at least receives and hears what I'm saying, acknowledges it, and figures out a plan for how to solve that. And I know I'm not the only parent, but I am a parent. I have brought it to, you know, administration. So I'm, I'm that guy you're asking about, that, that's me. Um, I certainly think there's more of me. I know there's more of me, but if, you know, I, I know you want other people to contact them and they should, but I'm telling you, I'm one of them. I'm, I'm that guy. So that's what I'm trying to, and, and I want to give Chad that opportunity. I, I, I absolutely do. Um, I, what I'm struggling with is the board sets the North Star and the direction. If we don't set any North Star or, or direction on stuff, then what is our purpose on some of this stuff? And I know it's a fine line of being descriptive versus prescriptive, so, anyway.
And I, I would add, there is an SRG committee already. All we were saying is, um, that you can break the committee up. Like we have that often at, at my school where you have a main committee and then they break up by buildings. And then you come together for discussions as you need, but you're able to kind of bring your specific building concerns. Um, so there is a committee already, it's not creating a new committee. Um, if anything, it'd be able, you know, would, would give Mr. Beckel the, the opportunity to add more people on to it for the, the secondary aspect and Mrs. Woods on, on her end if needed, um, to open up those discussions for those, those two and come together as a whole committee as needed as well. Um, it was Sharon who brought up the idea of, of parents and whatnot serving on that. Um, I'm not saying that's right or wrong, um, but I thought that was one way in, in getting some of the voices heard. Um, and I, I echo with, uh, Nathan as well that I, I am a parent as well. And I've been working a heck of a lot longer than three months to have my voice heard and attended meetings and had discussions. And, um, it, it's very frustrating to not. And I've brought in stuff from, um, parents who've spoken to me in regards to it. I always encourage them to, to contact. Um, and I, I, I hope they do, particularly with, with the new leadership we have in place, that they feel comfortable in doing so. Um, but I, I'm not just bringing my voice here. Because that would be ridiculous to sit here and only feels though what I want wants to be met. I'm, I'm bringing multiple voices here and, and promise them I would fight for it and that's what I'll continue to do. And absolutely don't want to tear down what they've worked on. Um, just, you know, you, you tweak stuff as it goes and this seems to be the consensus of, of the biggest tweak that needs done right now, so.
Okay, is there any further discussion? All right, with that, I guess I'll entertain a motion.
Well, I'll put it out there. I'm gonna motion to approve the staff handbook as presented. With the resolution though, to direct admin to require homework or the body of evidence to be graded in regards to the secondary building and factor this into the grade as a whole. Um, I would ask that we have this, these changes brought back before the beginning of the school year uh, and could have a special board meeting if needed.
Okay, I'm gonna try and repeat that. So the, the motion on the table is to approve the handbook as is with the changes and direct the administration to incorporate grading of bodies of evidence. I didn't hear you specify any percentage or anything, just grading bodies of evidence?
I would defer that to Mr. Gannon, Brandon and the, uh, SRG committee.
Okay, so it was grading of the body of evidence into the, um, into the, the handbook and bring it back to the August meeting, or, uh, before school starts, sorry. I was thinking August meeting, but you said before school starts. Did I get all that right? Yes. Okay. There's a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
It's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Can I clarify, did you pull the preschool handbook and daycare handbook out?
Yes, yes, I pulled that out, yep, yep. So we're gonna go to the preschool handbook and daycare handbook now. So, um, is there any discussion on the preschool handbook? Okay, um, I, I did have just, just one thing. So I read through, um, and I think it's great, uh, the, the changes we're making. I saw that we're updating some of the curriculum for the, um, preschool, I believe it was preschool, it wasn't daycare, for adding in, um, something called owls pals. Um, and I spent quite a bit of time reading through all of that and, and the different objectives for the preschool. Um, I think it looked pretty good. I did have some questions on, um, the social emotional learning aspect for, for preschool. And it didn't really go like into detail on what the exact, you know, objectives or what they're gonna be teaching those preschoolers for social emotional learning. So I was just wondering if, maybe in a future board meeting, if we could have somebody come back and, and talk to us about, um, the, these, you know, social emotional learning for preschoolers. Um, that, that was interesting to me. I didn't see anything that was necessarily a red flag, but also the owls pals course, where I didn't really go into detail about what they're teaching on that, so.
Would the, um, and Mrs. Woods', uh, report, she noted something about a new, I think, thing? Was that more for fifth and sixth grade though, not elementary as a whole?
Fifth and sixth grade.
Fifth and sixth grade, okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, any other discussions on the preschool handbook? All right, with that, I'll entertain a motion for the preschool handbook.
I would motion to pass the preschool handbook as is.
I second it.
Been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, next we move to the daycare handbook. Is there a discussion? All right, seeing no discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll motion to approve the daycare handbook.
Been properly motioned, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right. Next item we have is the blower motor for the CTE building unit approval. Um, as I understand with this, we had a, somewhat of an emergency. We needed to get something ordered now so we can get it in time, get, you know, order it so we can get it in time for school. Um, so, uh, this is just kind of a, a retroactive. Uh, Mr. Brandon did, did reach out to us on, on this particular one. So is there any discussion on the blower motor for the CTE building?
You said that, uh, the labor is not included, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
All right. Seeing no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion to approve the blower motor for the CTE building.
I motion to approve the blower motor for the CTE building.
Been properly motioned, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Next we have the additional high school volleyball coach approval. Um, uh, there was a link, if you guys read this, I thought it was fantastically done. I'm guessing Mr. Weber, um, showed all of the, the other schools and the amount of players they had and the coaches they had, like it, it was, it was spot on. And I think, you know, for, for me, I think it made sense. I don't know if Mr. Weber, you wanted to come up and describe or talk about it anymore, but it was, uh, very clear to me and thank you for putting in the work on that.
I like how he shook his head and still walked.
Yeah.
Last time you seen me asking for a coach. Our numbers are high, but you're good.
Yep.
No, the one thing, the caveat that's not on there is, anytime I've done this since I've gotten here, I've requested it in year two. So our volleyball team had over 40 members last year. But just like when we had a third, uh, boys' basketball position, I think three years ago, we waited a year to make sure the numbers proved out, our surveys, the kids came back. Then we got it, but then our numbers dipped, some kids left, and then we dropped it. And so I'll be more than likely coming to you next spring, talking about baseball. Because we had to add a third level of baseball due to numbers, but we only have two coaches. And the travel on that was crazy, trying to get on different buses at different times. So this is actually year two with these numbers. The numbers are gonna go up again next year because we have a smaller senior class and a lot, a lot of middle school kids continuing to come out. So, um, I just wanted to make sure you knew, um, it's not a, a one-time thing in my opinion. We try to prove it through one year and then when we see it's a norm, then that's when we need the additional help.
Hey, quick question. So JVR, that's more kind of your freshman usually, right? Are you seeing more schools that are having those teams for more of that competitive level for those ninth graders? Because I know like in years past, it seems like it's hit and miss.
You're talking about across all different spaces?
Like across the, the district?
It's all based, all based on numbers.
It is.
Yeah, so like a majority, if you would, let's say if we look, you do see local schools, POI, you know, the conference where we were, we were in, a lot of those don't have the numbers to have that third level. Now in some, volleyball, it's more a norm, that you have that freshman, that JV, that varsity, right? That's just a norm in that sport. But when we're talking like, when we added the football one three years ago to have the freshman team, when we added baseball, it's all based on how many kids go to your school and then how many are staying out for sports. And so the conference where now you have more bigger schools, so more do have that one.
Thank you.
Yep, any others?
Nope. Thank you for taking the time on filling that out, so. Is there any further discussion on the, um, additional high school volleyball coach? With that, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the additional high school volleyball coach position.
Been properly motioned, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Next we have the district property insurance buy-down options and approval. And I am going to turn this over to April because I read this and it was a bit complicated to understand, so.
So with what happened is on our property insurance, wind and hail is now 1% deductible of the value of the building and the contents. So our building here is $44 million. So that's $440,000 deductible if there's any damage due to wind and hail. And then on top of that is your contents, which is over a million dollars. So then that adds even more on there.
What percentage did you say?
No, 1%, so what these, these two quotes are is to buy down the deductible insurance. You can see to buy down that, we'll just go with the cost of the building, $440,000 deductible down to $25,000 deductible is around $45,000 for the year. To buy it down to $100,000 deductible is around just under $35,000, so.
So it's insurance on the insurance deductible?
Insurance on the insurance.
Got it.
Um, our projection for the management fund, because management fund is 100% property tax levied money. Um, so the projection to end the school year that just ended is that it's gonna be around $450,000 is how much we're gonna have in there. That's not talking your contents in the building, that's just the building value if something were to happen. Hopefully it doesn't, but insurance is insurance. Um, but one claim could wipe our management fund out to zero.
What are you recommending option A or option B on this to us?
I think we can probably handle the hundred thousand, where it would take that out of the balance. In hopes that, just like any other insurance, you hope that you don't have to use it. So there's a ten thousand dollar difference. If we have to use it, then that's ninety thousand, or not quite ninety, sixty-five thousand more that we've gotta pay.
So it's only ten thousand dollars difference between option A and option B?
Yes.
And we get seventy-five thousand dollars worth of, so you're recommending option B? I'm, yeah, okay. That makes sense to me.
Okay, so my question is, is on the four hundred and some thousand, four hundred and forty thousand dollars. So is that anything that happens to our property, we're responsible for the first four forty?
Yes.
Well, if someone runs into the building, it costs us fifty grand, we pay it.
It's wind or hail.
Just wind or hail?
It's on wind or hail.
I'm a gambling person.
I mean, that's, yeah, that's taxpayer dollars, everybody.
Can we get like a community vote on this? Cause I'd let it ride.
Yeah, it's, I, it's something that just changed this year.
Okay. So in essence, if I can summarize it, we, we're, we're paying twenty thousand dollars to take a hundred thou, or to move it down to a hundred thousand or take a hundred thousand off the four hundred thousand? Sorry, I'm...
So if our deductible is four hundred and forty-four thou, four hundred and forty thousand?
And we choose option B?
And we choose option B, something happens, our deductible's a hundred thousand.
Okay.
And we're paying that thirty-five thousand for that additional insurance.
Okay. So if you choose option A, then our deductible would be twenty-five thousand?
Correct.
And it's only ten thousand between the two difference? So I, I guess, oh, go ahead.
I just want to remind everyone, we just got a bunch of roof work done for a hundred and eighty grand.
If, if it doesn't go over?
I'm just saying, like, we're, we've got a job, like, on the deductible, I mean, so how much is the deductible, like, how much is it total? Like, what's it gonna cost us to get this down to a hundred? Cause my biggest thing is like, we just got a bunch of roof done for a hundred and eighty grand. So if we're responsible for up to a hundred grand anyway, if something happens.
That's the thirty-five thousand dollar insurance. Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, on top of whatever our premium is already.
Correct.
I think insurance is a scam.
So option B is thirty-five thousand dollars?
Yes.
That brings our deductible down to a hundred. Option A is forty-five thousand? And that brings our deductible down to twenty-five thousand dollars?
Correct.
Okay. I don't know, I guess I'm struggling, why wouldn't you just pay the other ten thousand to get it down to twenty-five?
If we pay it, yeah, the ten thousand makes sense. I'm just trying to figure out why we're buying insurance for our insurance.
We just wanted to give you the options.
Cause we don't have the money in the management fund in case something, you don't have to.
Right.
But that would wipe out our management fund if something happens.
Which is a hundred percent levied.
And I don't think we wanna take that chance.
Yeah. I don't feel comfortable taking that chance, yeah, so.
If you have a wind event, for instance, in my previous district, we had our, our roof that had just gotten redone, get ripped off, opened up the roof and it rained. So now you have all the contents inside as well, so we had to replace our whole gym floor, right? That adds up quickly, so you have to think on top of that too, but.
This is why it was brought to the board. These are the ups.
Yeah, thank you. All right, um, obviously I can't make motions or something, but I'll just say to my colleagues, I like option A. I think it's the smartest, but in any case, uh, I'll entertain a motion from anybody, so.
And April, what was your recommendation again?
I'm not saying it's right or wrong. I'm just saying currently looking at our funds and always hoping that, just like your car insurance, that you're not, you don't want to use it, but you do have it. I think our management fund could handle the hundred thousand dollar deductible with some major planning moving forward. This was a change that happened even after the budgets were basically done. So, um, it's really, it's gonna be a different view every year of how do you stack that management fund?
And is this an annual? I don't remember ever approving this.
It's annual. This is the first time it's hap, this has happened. Otherwise, the renewal process is just part of what we do already and we try to project out and say what that increase is gonna be every year. This is something completely on top of it because it changed only this fiscal year.
Okay. I would make a motion to approve, go with option B, the one hundred thousand district property insurance buy-down option B.
It's been properly moved to have a se, to approve option B. Do I have a second for that?
I'll second the motion.
Been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor, signify by aye. Aye?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Option B, it is, okay.
Hey, April, real quick, because a lot of people don't read our whole budget and everything, can you go ahead and just state how much our premium is for the year already?
You put her on the spot?
I'm good with a rough number.
Two hundred and eighty-one thousand.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have, um, the last item on the agenda is the district cleaning services, which I reached out to Mr. Grandin on this one, cause I was confused is to, it looked like to me that we have two that were asked to be approved, but it turns out it's a either or and there's a recommendation. So I'll hand this over to Mr. Grandin to talk through this.
Sorry, I apologize for that confusion. So we have two cleaning services, um, asking for approval of one. Cleaning Connections is our current provider and their quote was six thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars a month total. And then we also have Pristine Janitorial Service. Their quote was six thousand, one hundred and forty dollars and twenty cents a month. And, uh, we're recommending moving to pristine janitorial service. Same, or same or similar services, we wouldn't drop in any services or anything like that, but five hundred dollars cheaper a month, so.
All right, so just to reiterate on this, members of board, you're not approving both. You would make a, you know, potential motion to approve one or the other. The recommendation, it sounds like from administration, is the pristine janitorial services. So, um, is there any discussion on this? All right, seeing no discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
I motion to approve pristine.
Okay, it's been properly moved to approve pristine janitorial services. Do I have a second?
I will second.
Been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor, signify by aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Next, we have our upcoming, uh, board meeting, tentatively scheduled for August 26, 2024. With that becomes the end of our meeting agenda, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I motion to adjourn.
Been properly moved to adjourn. Do I have a second?
I will second it.
Been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor, signify by aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.